All right. You ready? Hit the button. All right. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Yeah. That's every single time. Get ready. Can I go have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Little is absent at this time, but we expect him shortly. Councilmember Sander. Councilmember Budge.
Yeah.
Mayor Pulapotti is absent. Vice Mayor Gatewood.
Here.
Here. Go ahead and read the metro, cable metro announcement.
The meaning of the Rancho Cordova City Council is recorded with closed captioning. The recording will be cable cast on Metro Cable Channel 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast and DirecTV U-verse cable systems. The recording will also be video streamed at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting will replay on Thursday, November 20th at 9:00 a.m. and Sunday, November 23rd at 9:00 a.m. on Metro Cable Channel 14. Once posted, the recording of this meeting can also be viewed on demand at youtube.com/metrocable14 and on the city's website. Thank you.
All right. I'm going to go ahead and let's go ahead and rise for the pledge allegiance. All right. And salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. So I'm going to go have invocation. Can I have Chaplain John Kent from the Sacramento Law Enforcement Chaplaincy come up, please? No Mr. Kent? All right. Well, then this Christian is going to take it for where everyone bow their heads. Heavenly Father, I just want to say thank you for taking the time to put this amazing meeting together, these individuals to come. Please have your grace and glory be upon us. Please help us to make good decisions. Please help us to guide our city to do what's right and do what's good needed. In your name we pray. All right. Okay. So I'm going to do, I'm going to jump ahead. Before we do anything, I'm going to have, we have Mills' little league soccer team came up today to tell us about soccer. So I'm going to call the, I'm sorry, Coach, what was your name?
James.
James to the front. And go ahead and bring the girls up. And we're excited about this. This is public comment.
Come on, come on, get in, get in. We all got to get in. We all got to stay. All right. All right. All right. My name is James Domsek. I have the privilege of serving as the athletic director of Mills Middle School. I'm here with Coach Maria, as well as our team captain Kathy B. And she's got a message here.
You guys have been our biggest supporters and we have one message for you. One, two, three.
Thank you, City of Rancho Cordova.
We appreciate your support. Thank you very much, you guys. Because you want us in front of the podium right here?
Right over here in the middle.
All right. Next on our list is something near and dear to my heart. We are going to have, where is it? I just lost my train of thought, which is awesome.
Code number five.
Five point one. All right. United College Action Presentation on Summer 2025 Historical Black Colleges. If you want to come on up, that'd be great. Good night, guys.
Thank you, guys.
Hey, we are very proud of you athletes. Thank you for coming out tonight and thank you for all your hard work.
Don't worry, don't forget.
Go get them.
Go get them. Cordova at number one. That's right.
Good evening. My name is Angelice Farrell. I am the COO for United College Action Network, known as UCAN. And we hosted a 2025 Historical Black College and University Tour back in June. And that could not have been taking place without the support of this council and the city of Rancho Cordova. So thank you, Vice Mayor, and everyone that is here today and who is absent. On behalf of Dr. Rowe as well, he would like to send his thanks. He could not be here tonight. I'm going to pass this over to our Director of the Tour, who can give you a little bit of information before we play the video.
Again, thank you. My name is Daphne Wells and I was on the bus with the students this summer and it was a really great experience for our students to get an opportunity to visit nine HBCUs in the South. We took 15 students from Rancho Cordova, specifically with Cordova High School. 12 of them were sponsored through the Community Enhancement and Investment Fund. And another three who did not have a Cordova address were sponsored through UCAN. And happy to say that all of the students who went, all of those who are in senior standing, received on-the-spot admissions to five of the nine schools that we visited. And so, speaking with the students, many of them are very much interested in pursuing their higher education at one of the HBCUs. And so we're looking forward to seeing come, what's it called, Decision Day, where those students come. But again, we thank you. This is the first time we did the tour since the pandemic. And as Ms. Angelice mentioned, it would not be possible without the funds because many of our students don't have the ability to go around and look at colleges on their own. And so we're very happy to work with you all to get our students on the bus to see these schools. And so we put together a presentation, if you all, to kind of get a glimpse of what the students experience. And if you all have any questions afterward, we're happy to field those for you. But.
My name is Makar. And the thing I'm most excited about about this trip is being able to explore different HBCUs and being able to meet people in the single south.
I'm most excited about going out of state and getting to see new colleges and hopefully getting accepted into HBCU.
I'm most excited about exploring all the new colleges and exploring new places and meeting new people.
Have stood where you stand, all of which have gone on to do great things, not only for themselves and their careers, but their communities and their families.
My name is Summer Spencer. I serve as the district recruiter here at the Alabama State University.
I really hope students got an experience there. I hope they got some knowledge that's going to help them with any universities they go to. And I hope they got an experience they will remember and stay with them.
My favorite part of the trip was talking to the tour group about their college experiences in the past.
I'm Don Zellley, President of Tugu College here in Jackson, Mississippi. Tugu College was founded in 1869 and we have two major pillars, academic excellence and social justice. Over the years, Tugu has done an outstanding job in educating young minds and sending individuals out into the world who have made great, great contributions to society.
My favorite part of the trip was just touring one of the colleges and getting to see like beautiful campuses from all over the South. And I also had fun making connections with people I never knew.
My favorite part of the trip, I would say, was meeting new friends and new people and making good connections with all of Vice Chaparral's and all of my friends. I'm going to get every single person here.
My name is Joshua. My favorite part of the trip was when we went to Tuskegee. Get excited. He was the best poor guy ever.
My favorite part of the trip was being able to tour the colleges because we also got to receive on-the-spot admissions.
So they had time to visit nine schools?
Yeah.
That's amazing.
It is, except for there was, it looks like there was some betas that got loose in there. Listen. Kappa only in this city, just so we know. You're not, no betas, no sigmas. You know better. So I went to, I was at the high school at an NAACP speech and they were talking about how these, these individuals, a lot of the African-American and other mortaries don't get a chance to go see other colleges and never been out and this thing. And so I was like, well, let's change that. Let's give them the chance to go to an HBCU and really get a chance. First of all, blows my mind that the, that the school, the school would offer them the chance to come to the school right away. I like that idea. Just like you walk on instantaneously, you're, you're ready to go to this college. Very attractive. And the fact that our kids got a chance to see another style, because just, Rancho Cordova has so many opportunities for so many different cultures to go out and see that. And, and this just blows my mind. I'm so excited that I was able to be part of it. And honestly, I'm more excited that Micah was able to make this happen because he had to run me down. And you know me, I'm hard to get ahold of. But thank you for what you did. This is amazing. I'd love that they went to Tuskegee, to Alabama, to Morehouse. We will talk once again. Kappa only. Thank you very much. We understand. We want to. Hopefully, we can do this again. I think giving people options of colleges, local, and giving them the, the chance to see that our world's bigger. And then always, the always, the last word is always come back home with all the knowledge you gain. Because that's go out in the world, make it big, but come back home and bring all that knowledge back. Because, because we're going to, I'm not telling this, but secretly, our school district is trying to recruit out of the HBCUs. So our next thing is to go out there and find the talent that comes out of those schools and bring them back to Rancho. So thank you for what you do.
And, you know, as a kind of reminder, just a couple of things is, you know, this is a part of our annual CEIF program process and we like new things. And so I think this is one of the new applicants from this last year that the council approved as part of the CEIF opportunity. So that was a good kind of segue into that. Thank you.
Excellent. They want a picture. So everyone up. Come on. We're going to do a picture with you guys. Come on, come on, Linda. All right. Next on our list, Soilborne Farms. Come on up. It's not unusual to be loved. No. All right. So this young gentleman here that was not great before we started, I want to give recognition on 25 years of Soilborne Farms. So we're at Soilborne Farm, an urban agricultural education project. Celebrates 25 years of impact on the city of Rancho Cordova and the surrounding city. Soilborne Farms began as a for-profit farm in 2000s by Sean Harrison and Marco Francisco, two young inexperienced farmers, which is hilarious, who had a dream and a lot of ambition. In the 2020, Janet Zeller joined their team. And in 2024, the three co-founders transformed the farm into 501(c)(3) nonprofit. I could read through all this, but really what I'd like to say is 55 acres on an amazing river that makes the city special. It's just another piece of our culture. The basic cameo, these individuals that aren't farmers started farming in our city and basically made a special, special thing for our city. And I just want to say thank you for everything you do. Here's your award. And now you get to come up here and tell us all the amazing things you did thanks to being part of us. You're welcome. And a clap.
I think we should all clap because this has been quite a journey to create this place. I don't know if folks know, but the American River Ranch has been in this community since the 1840s as a working farm. And believe it or not, many of us were in a conversation back in 2005 about how we were going to, you know, bring this thing back to life. And under the umbrella of a nonprofit called Soilborne Farms, running and starting a nonprofit is not for the faint of heart. And starting and sort of recreating and bringing this place into existence isn't for the faint of heart either. But I think what I wanted to share with you all is that, and for the folks that are in the audience, this has been a, the, the evolution of the American River Ranch over the last, really the last 20 years, went from this very much a diamond in the rough, but, but it was rough. And I literally walked down to what used to be a cement ditch with shopping carts and graffiti this morning. And there was salmon coming up the creek, in Cordova Creek. So, you know, this whole place has transformed. The corridor along Chase Drive has transformed with pedestrian and walkability and a theater at the school and the schools with school gardens. The farm has become a heart of sorts of the community. And if you're out there during the week with kids or on Saturdays as part of the visiting public, you will really feel that there is a place for people to come and get access to food and connect with nature, connect with one another, learn hands-on skills in the garden and in the kitchen. And, and it's a place that's on the map now in our own, in our own town. So we should be super proud about it. It's just the beginning. We feel like we've just built the foundations for a world-class place. And come spring, you'll encounter the groundbreaking of the new animal barn that will house about 300 kids from Ag Academy at Cordova High School. So thank you, everyone, for your amazing support, the city of Rancho Cordova. If this project was, we tried to do this anywhere else, it would not have happened. I think we all shared a similar vision. And yeah, the possibilities are endless. Super excited to, thank you for honoring us tonight.
Picture again.
Up and picture again. You guys are going to get some exercise.
Promise Janet photos. I promise Janet photos.
All right. Okay, let's go on, move on to new employees. So can I please have introduction of new employees? Dina Williams, customer service rep by Stacy Leitner, and other people. So let's start with Stacy Leitner. And my favorite too, where are my little ones at? Where are the babies at? The babies. The babies. Look at the Afro puff on him.
Vice Mayor and councilmembers, excited to share with you one of our newest employees who joined us in September of this year, Dina Williams. I've asked Dina to introduce herself so that she can share a little bit about her background with you. But Dina is our customer service representative. She will, is primarily sitting at the upstairs reception desk outside of your offices. And she does additional coverage for Yen, our main receptionist, at the first floor reception desk. So we're excited to have her.
Thank you. Of course, my name is Dina Williams. I'm excited to be a part of the Rancho Cordova community. Although I don't live in Rancho Cordova yet, I do feel deeply connected to this community. I actually attended a vocational college in District 3's Lincoln Village a few decades ago. My spouse has worked in Rancho Cordova for the last 13 years at San Juan Soccer Club. And my son plays soccer there as well. So while he's at practice, I am a huge patron and do lots of shopping in Rancho Cordova. I actually met my spouse about 10 years ago at George Washington Carver High School at soccer practice. Can you see a theme? I'm currently enrolled in college and changing my major so I can grow and be a dynamic person for the city of Rancho Cordova. And although I am a busy mother of four, the transition from education to the public sector has been seamless and smooth thanks to the great community that we have here and the support that I've been given. So thank you.
Welcome. Babies in the back.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Gatewood, councilmembers. Edgar Medina, Public Works Department. I'm very pleased to introduce Hari Perugou. He is our newest team member in the Public Works. He is going to be leading our traffic engineering division. He's our principal traffic engineer. And I'll hand it over to him to give you a little bit of background on him.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you, Edgar. My name is Hari Perugou. And yeah, I go by Hari. Even though my, Hari Kishan Chand, Perugou is my last full name. So I've been living in this community for the last three years. So, so excited to be working for the home community. And also I have 18 years of experience with the different public agencies. And I would like to bring the, all that experience for commitment for the city of Rancho Cordova and make the roads safer, smarter, and connected. So yeah, I'm excited. Thank you.
Welcome. Awesome. Two new people that are going to be in Rancho Cordova, always a win when you kind of work for the city. All right, next up, most important thing is birthdays. Yes, yes. Old people.
Can I motion to skip this?
No, you can't because it's going to.
I wonder if that works.
That's cute. But there's no one to take a vote. All right. So let's go ahead and sing it. And his birthday. One, two, three. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you.
Cha cha cha.
Happy birthday, dear David Sanders.
Cha cha cha.
Happy birthday to you.
And then anymore.
Hey. And so he's actually.
Thank you very much.
75 years old.
Minus 20-something, yeah.
No, he's only been in 75 locations these last two years.
Not even, this isn't really David. This is our AI hologram. If you put your hand through it, it actually goes right through him at this point. All right. So now we're going to move on to public comment. And members of the public wishing to address this council for any matters not on the agenda may do so by completing and submitting a speaker card to the clerk. For items on the agenda, speaker will be called on at the point of the agenda when the item will be heard. Speakers are encouraged to keep their comments to three minutes or less and state the name and community of residence. Under the provision of, sorry, still warming up to this. Under the provisions of the California Government Code, the city council is prohibited from discussing or taking immediate action on any item not on the agenda unless it can be demonstrated to be of emergency nature or a need to take immediate action arose after the posting of this agenda. Do we have any public comment?
Yes, we do.
All right. Let's hear it.
We'll start with those speakers that are in the room. We'll start with Larry Ladd. Following Larry will be James Garcia and Helen Whalen. And you'll have up to three minutes.
Righto. So the formal topic is the fifth attempt by the federal government to regulate procured drinking water. But I'm starting with public service announcements first. First, I was buying stuff at Target for the Police Activities League and the officers informed me that there is serious need for more volleyballs. So, and I thanked the Mills team for telling me which one was a volleyball and which one was a soccer ball because my old eyes can't see the seams. So thank you, Mills. The, the David, the folks with the traditional black colleges, that's exactly what I was talking about when I said travel is what breaks up routine and opens up your mind. And it doesn't have to be to Rome or to London. It can be to Tuskegee. So reinforce that point from way back. And then I learned, Garrett, I was chastised for joking at a city council meeting because it's a very serious thing. And the joke that got me in trouble was saying I had $10,000 of city money and I was all ears about how to spend it. And I was making reference to my ears and I got some laughs out of it. Oh, boy, did I. So I want to clarify because you can see me buying stuff all the time and it's with my money. All right? Six copies of this for a PTA, this for Interact Coming Together, putting this in the ROTC mailbox. This is all my stuff, the Native American folks. But what I will be doing is in your district with the organizationally bought books, I've asked the principal to sit down at their Friday fair and put the books out. The whole point of what we do is the kids choose the book. They're not issued a book. The kids choose the book. And so that's why we're there doing that. And so that's why we're there doing that. So that will be city money. All this other stuff, no. Now, the Christmas gift I gave you, yes.
What is the, hit me with the stuff.
Say again?
Are we at DEFCON, or is this, are we still in the watching mode? Is it serious?
Oh, wait a minute. You're joking, right?
No, no, I'm actually, with you, you're the, you're my- Canary in the coal mine? That's what I count on you for. So when people ask about you, I'm like, no, he's a canary in the coal mine, so he'll tell us if there's an actual real problem. Are we at the real problem?
Now, Garrett, I will answer your question. Thank you for your question. There have been five attempts to regulate procured and drinking water on the federal level since the last century, and every administration that files through ends up not doing it. Now, this administration is unique and straightforward, because the judge's order has been met, the EPA has come up with a national standard, but it's secret. Now traditionally, the way that, yeah, right, the safe drinking water law, what was kind of set up, that if the administration wanted to kill what the EPA did, they would do it at OMB. I got told that from Mary Ann. So it's going to MB with the number from the EPA that we don't know what it is. So, kind of absurd, and I will try and get ahold of it with Region 9, and I'll read it and give you feedback then. What this is about is, this is my example of how it should be done and is not, largely because this country is run by attorneys, nothing personal. So, you know, in terms of liquid rocket fuel or Xantac, those mutations up in the top in the thyroid, and if, they're slow growing, or don't, the mutation that will kill you in pancreatic cancer and colon cancer is a dud in the thyroid, it's all great. And down below, the red and the green, that is radiation. Radiation breaks chromosome and they fuse together, and it grows much faster. And always, these issues are political on a big scale. So for example, Chernobyl, these issues, PFOAs and nitrate, figured very closely in with Chernobyl, in that the devastation with kids with thyroid cancer was intentionally inflated to help undermine the Soviet Union. Three-quarters of those kids had nodules that never grow into cancer, and they knew it, but they were counted because it caused such an uproar in the Soviet Union. So that's my closing argument, is all this stuff, science has very little to do with it. It's all lawyering and politics by and large. So I will do my best, as a good citizen, to find out what the latest version is, maybe bribe some people and get a copy of it, and tell you about it.
You keep saying that. You're going to get yourself in trouble again. Do you stop, you don't bribe nobody. Who's going to ask for it?
I don't have any money to bribe anybody, I'm too busy buying books.
We appreciate everything you do. All right, next.
Next speaker is James Garcia.
Hi, James Garcia, resident of Stone Creek. I just wanted to bring forth to the community that they can contact the police department's non-emergency number, because I talked to Lieutenant Daniels tonight, because there's been a lot more, seems like race car revving, doing like donuts in the middle of the night, especially in the Stone Creek neighborhood. We've been really hearing it this past few weeks, especially as the rain and the darkness has fallen earlier. They are starting to rev up around 10 o'clock, 11 o'clock at night, and just go crazy. On my way here, we actually heard it, once again. In our living room, we're hearing the revving up. It's either the race cars just revving it, or they're doing donuts. It could be coming over from the, which went high-class auto over on North Mather, or it's the industrial part over where all the wrecking yards are. Can't quite tell yet, but again, the public is more than welcome to, please call that non-emergency phone number of 916-362-5115, anytime they know and hear it, because if the police don't know about it, they won't go to it. So don't do it 30 minutes later thinking somebody else is going to do it. Do it. Try to give the best direction where you think it's happening, so that way they can try to respond. May not happen, they might not catch anybody, but at least, we got to stop it, because it just keeps going on and on and on. So I just wanted to let everybody else know that. It's not just Stone Creek, I'm sure it's all over the city, but the police is more than willing to go try to investigate, if they can, of course. If there's an emergency, they're going to go to that first, but please call that non-emergency number if you, if you hear it and see it. And if you can really give an address, that's even better for them, but, thanks.
Next speaker is Helen Whalen.
Greetings, everyone. Helen Whalen Boshaw from the Tiffany area. Two things. I mentioned at the last meeting about the city needs to promote more of the fishing, because from mid-July to the end of October, the salmon runs. We get people from all over the place, and I don't remember seeing anything that really addresses what the fishing community brings in, because you know they're buying food, some of them are staying in the hotels, because there's very few places that you can salmonfish. Another thing I'd like to tap on to, we have Soil Barn, right on Rod Bodre, the only house on Rod Bodre is officially what they call a pollinator site. All the plants being put onto that property now, they attract the bees, they attract the hummingbirds, and most of them are native species plants. So with Soil Barn, you've got the Rod Bodre, the house, and by preserving the lower portion of the 41 acres, the 25 acres that are in floodway, you will have a dynamic event for the youth, they can learn about the farming that started in the 18, whatever it was. They are going to come over and see the 25 acres that sits below where the Neesonman lived. We know for sure, 2,500 years ago, where they used to come to that land twice a year, because we didn't have Folsom Dam, so the dam raised and lowered twice a year. And then you have the pollinator site. So I think the city needs to focus more on promoting those, because I know in the years, we've promoted, the city has promoted a lot with Soil Barn, paying for, I believe, the road that goes in there when it needed done. We've, we've put a lot of money into Soil Barn, and we can balance it off by having either a biking event that starts near Soil Barn and ends at the Rod Bodre House, once we block that build on the lower 25 acres. That is in a floodway, and I do hope we don't change the Folsom Boulevard plan to allow that site to be developed. Thank you.
In addition to the speakers that we heard this evening, we also had two individuals present public comment via email. That was Donald Childs and Larry Ladd. Those emails have been distributed to the council, placed on the city's website, and they are printed in a binder in the back of the council chambers for viewing.
That's cool. And I'll be happy to run an event where I catch Chinook salmon. Sounds like I'll be, she needs me to fish, which is always a benefit. All right, let's go to council meetings. Joe, what you got?
Council reports.
You know it.
Yeah. I was on KCRA 3 last night, talking about an agenda item tonight, and how it's a good idea and good for us. Had an interesting presentation from the League of Women Voters. They're going around the region advocating for ranked choice voting. I think it's a good idea, seems like the most democratic way to handle local elections. Also went to the senior center in Lincoln Village, there was a presentation by Josh Hoover, Pat Hume, and Rich Desmond, and got to hear, you know, them speak their truth.
Excellent. David, what you got?
A few things. Been going on in Rancho Cordova. I was happy to lead the Rancho Cordova Leadership Module for Growing Strong Neighborhoods with Loriann here on our staff, and Rusty Charm, and talk about Growing Strong Neighborhoods. They've had this module now for at least a decade. I used to lead it, but my travel the past few years has made it impossible for me to be there most of the time, but this year I was able to do it. So it was fun to, to talk to these, these great volunteers who are in Rancho Cordova Leadership Program about the whole theme of Growing Strong Neighborhoods that much of our city efforts are sort of built around. So that was, that was a great session. I also participated in a class at Cordova High School, actually talked to them about athletic opportunities, specifically track opportunities, in, in events they may not know about, but might be able to compete in in college and other locations. Had some great conversation with veterans about their needs with regard to facilities or spaces or partnerships. I was going to Mills Middle School last Thursday. Unfortunately, this event got rained out, but they did a rocket build, they just couldn't do the rocket launch that they'd invited us all to. They did a rocket build in partnership with Solidine, and it was sort of capitalizing on a bunch of volunteers from Solidine, a bunch of students at Mills who are building the rockets, they were supposed to build them in the morning and then go out and launch them. I think the launch date is still to be announced, because it got rained out. Do we know?
It's just been rescheduled. I'll find it.
They sent an email today.
In any case, what a great way to sort of celebrate Rancho Cordova's heritage, but also tap into these great new scientists we have among us at Solidine, and their partnership with the middle school. So that was a wonderful looking event, hopefully it'll still happen. Went to Saksure Meeting, a bunch of NLC meetings, and tomorrow I'm off to the annual meeting in Salt Lake City, and I will return on Sunday, and that will be the end of my year as past president of the NLC.
Don't you mean past past?
Nope, just past president.
Just past president.
Just past president. Now, from then on, I'll be a member of the executive committee, but hopefully my travel demand will diminish. So it's been an honor to serve there, an honor to represent us there, an honor to bring stuff back from there. I can still do that last task, hopefully with less trouble. Thank you all for your support these past couple of years.
Awesome. Linda?
Okay, so this is a really good opportunity to congratulate a whole bunch of people. We need to congratulate our mayor Siri on a wonderful state-of-the-city event. We need to congratulate the Cordova High Engineering Academy, they've just won a very auspicious award. We can congratulate our friends in the Russian community, Russian-speaking community, for putting on another annual Best of the, Best of the Best Business Awards. We can congratulate all of our business community that, that appeared in our, in the Bee's Sacramento Favorites magazine. And yes, David, we can congratulate the Mills Rocket Program. It's been rescheduled to Friday, the 21st, at 11:30, which unfortunately is a conflict with community council, but it's been rescheduled. Regional Transit was a very interesting and information-filled meeting the other night. It actually turns out, there's been a report about budget increases to public safety at Regional Transit, and all of their transit ambassadors are going from 40 to 50, they're hiring 10 more. The Sacramento Operations Center is hiring 10 more people, and 10 more guards who will work with ATU, who's the American Transit Union. The issues that they've encountered at Regional Transit have not been, not generally been physical, they've been aggressive verbal kinds of issues, but they, these people will all help to, to counter that. Their evasion is down from a high of 20% about six years ago to less than 1%. The Sacramento Police Department has left Regional Transit, and so the Sheriff's Department is serving as the police organizations, organization. And restraining orders, the ability to do restraining orders on Regional Transit vehicles is going into effect in January. They are also using drones, like every smart police department in this region. And that was, it was really an amazing amount of, of information for that. Let's see. I personally will be at Navigator on Friday, handing out dictionaries to our third grade the way we also always do. The craft fair, the annual craft fair will be here on Thursday. You're a very hard person if you go away without buying something at the annual craft I also attended an absolutely wonderful concert at the Performing Arts Center by our Symphony Doro, and I would ask that we adjourn tonight in the memory of our former vice president, Dick Cheney. This was a gentleman who gave his entire life to serving his neighbors, his community, his state, and this country. The speech that he made on the 12th of September was absolutely the kind of thing that this country needed to hear, full of determination and perseverance and hope, and it was really the absolute right speech for that particular period of time. So I would ask that we adjourn in the memory of Dick Cheney.
All right. So everyone said everything I was going to say. Happy, it's ruined. I don't like being mayor. I can get to the last thing, I have nothing left to say. JPA Board, we are now buying land, so that's very exciting, because we're trying to extend that freeway on the backside, and so they purchased two pieces of land. The $25 million should be getting pushed through as we're speaking right now, so then we can start building some really nice two-lane but fake four-lane roads with bulbous, and I was like, it's fine, you can call it a two-lane road, but it's the size of a four-lane road, but whatever makes people happy in life and gets us the money that we need. And then thank you to the Chamber of Commerce for the craft fair, where I will be losing lots of money that my wife will be shopping at. All right. That being said, where's the dog?
He's at Grandma and Grandpa's. Can I do a follow-up? I would also like us to adjourn the meeting tonight in honor of Thursday's Transgender Day of Awareness, or, sorry, I'm blanking on the name, but basically Transgender Day of Remembrance, to honor those who have lost their lives due to the struggle that our brothers and sisters go through in this society when they're born in a different mind than their body.
All right. Excellent. Micah?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Just a couple of things to add on. I had the pleasure of joining the Chamber Board last week at their, part of their planning retreat, talking about what the board and what the chamber can do to create better businesses and relationships in the city of Rancho Cordova, so participated in that. And they also have a business fair tomorrow here at City Hall, so if you're interested in learning about business resources and connections and those things, it's tomorrow from 4 to 6 here at City Hall. Just a couple of, or just one other announcement for the future. This is our last council meeting before our Christmas tree lighting, that is happening on November 30th, so remember to show up and be ready to celebrate at the Village Green Park on November 30th from 4 to 7. So those are my quick announcements. Thank you.
Awesome. All right. We're going to go on to consent calendar items. Consent calendar items consist of matters deemed routine and non-controversial by staff unless a member of the council wishes to pull an individual item. All can be considered in one. I'm going to pull item 9.3, but the rest can be moved in one agenda unless you guys have something else you'd like to pull out.
Move approval of the consent calendar items 9.1 through 9.8. With the exception of-
9.3.
Okay.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Councilmember Little.
Yes.
Before I do that, I just want to acknowledge that I have no public comment for these items.
Is there any public comment for these items?
There's no public comment for these items. Okay, finishing my roll call, we have Mayor Pulapati, who is absent, and Vice Mayor Gatewood.
Aye.
So the motion passes. Thank you.
Who you got for 9.3, for me to talk to?
Yeah, I think Albert Stricker will, happy to come up and answer comments or questions around 9.3.
All right. Good evening. So here's the thing. A long time ago, before I became a council member, I always felt like the city didn't look within itself before it chose a partner to do. I think the original city manager was big on saying, if we can do it in our own city, then we don't need to bring it in-house, and that's why our staff hasn't grown as much as it is. So I'm going to ask you some questions, and you can just say, hey, I'll get back to you on it. Who were the businesses that applied for this contract?
Good evening, Albert Stricker with the Public Works Department, and the businesses that applied for this contract were Brightview Landscaping Services, K&amp;K Jail Services, New Image Landscaping Companies, Proceda Landscape, Woody's Land Care, and the successful proposer was K&amp;K Jail Services.
Where is K&amp;K based?
They have an office in Fremont, I believe. They do have a yard off of, off of Horn Road here in Rancho Cordova.
So, the most important thing is always to remember, is I know that there's no way for me to do a city, what's it called, when you give a little bonus to being in the city of Rancho Cordova? Presence?
Local preference.
Local preference. It's very hard and very litigious to make it happen, but I would expect from my staff to at least reach out to at least the Chamber of Commerce and the local businesses that do this kind of thing. Rancho Cordova has 15 of the largest landscaping companies in the region, and I know they would love to have a partnership, and I know sometimes it's hard for them to know when stuff is going out to bed. Being someone that chases government work, it's very hard to find out, like be there, oh, I happen to be on the list. So this is less, I'll, I'll advance it ahead, but less that I just want to make awareness that we should, as a, as a city council, or as a staff, reach out locally just to have them apply. Now, they might not win, but I like to see at least us reaching out- that would have loved to apply for this, they probably just didn't see it. And this is our chance to really see if we can spend the money back in our own community. So.
So can I ask a question?
They need to sign up for the email list.
Yeah. Well...
So I have a question.
Go ahead.
But several of those organizations you talked about already have contracts with the city for a variety of other things like public improvements in Capital Village. So you have experience with a lot of them already. So this is not just necessarily monetarily based, it's also experience-based.
That's correct. This is a proposal, and the proposal is determined based on criteria including, of course, cost, but also their demonstrated ability to perform at a high level in similar work.
So unfortunately, Garrett, I have to tell you that the one that's maintaining Capital Village is not doing a very good job. So even though they might be locally based, we would expect that...
That one's not locally based. That one's based in Sacramento. If they were based in Rancho, they'd make sure Capital Village looked perfect, just so we're clear.
I appreciate your optimism. I'm not sure that's accurate.
So I know one time we did pass something that said we were gonna try to attempt to do a little bit more reach out. I know in the end that Rancho businesses still might not win the bid, but I would love to see us put a more effort into at least attempting to see if we can find it locally.
Yeah, I think we can, you know, kind of take the conversation happening at council now to make sure we're doing appropriate reach outs to kind of local vendors and things that could benefit from this work. And so I think that's something that we can definitely take direction on and make sure we're reaching out to the Chamber and others for local opportunities for work with with our team.
And at that, I'd like to move item 9.3.
Second.
And can I get a roll call? Thank you, Albert.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Gatewood.
Yes.
Mayor Pulapati is absent this evening. Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Councilmember Little.
Yep.
Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
The motion passes. Thank you.
All right. So we're gonna go on to consent calendar item consent public hearing items that consists of matters deemed routine and non-controversial by staff unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item individual, all items may be approved in one motion. I'm gonna go ahead and open the hearing and ask if the city clerk has any public comment.
We do not have any public comment for this item.
All right, I get to close the thing.
I will move approval of the consent public hearing items 10.1, 10.2, and 10.3.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Councilmember Little.
Yep.
Mayor Pulapati is absent. Vice Mayor Gatewood.
Yes.
The motion passes.
All right. Next one is 11.1. Is that right? Public hearing items, yes. Okay, 11.1, public hearing items. A resolution determining the need for local modifications to California Building Code standard and ordinance repealing and replacing Chapter 17.1 Fire Code to Rancho Cordova Municipal Code by adopting by reference of 2025 California California Code to making local amendments to portions thereof. Let's see. Call on Jeremy Zillig. Do you have a staff report?
Ms. Damon? Zillig? Jeremiah Zillig, Chief Building Official. Thank you, Vice Mayor and City Council. Also, I have with me Diana Schmidt, our Deputy Fire Marshal. A little bit of background, I clicked the wrong button on my report. Usually it goes by consent, but it was a happy accident because there were some nice changes made to the fire code, and we have a new way of doing it with the fire district, so it's extra safe this year. So we're happy about that. Quick background, we used to be under the Uniform Building Code. That changed in 2007, and we switched to the International Code. The Uniform Building Code gave us really, really robust buildings that didn't rely on fire sprinklers, relied on a lot of fire ratings. These are some hardy buildings that could withstand a lot of earthquake, wind, fire, those sort of things. The ICC Code came and gave a lot more credence to sprinkler systems. So now we have buildings in our community that are old school, they might not have fire sprinkler systems, and the new code really relies on these fire sprinklers to do a lot of things. So this year's updates to the fire code give us three things that are really nice, that we work with the fire department and we appreciated their collaboration because they heard our needs, and and they they came to the front and helped us with some things. One of them was fire access during construction. They helped us to find more solutions at lower costs possibly, so we on our new construction prices could go down. Economic development, obviously appreciated that and our developers as well. A second one was dealing with these robust buildings. They gave us a code way, a way to have code compliance while recognizing how robust these existing UBC buildings are, which really allows us to use our existing stock in the community for a number of different things to the foremost, while having to undergo possibly having to retrofit things with sprinkler systems. So we really appreciated that. A third thing is recognizing NFPA 13R sprinkler systems, which the effect of that is going to help with our apartment buildings and our low-income housing. It's very cost-effective, and it is a very code-compliant, cutting-edge way to meeting requirements in the building code for fire life safety. So with working with fire, we appreciate that they've made pathways in the code for us to be able to utilize these things so we can address our existing housing stock and also attract nice projects. So we just want to say thank you very much for your collaboration, a lot of hard work, hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of hours. These things aren't easy, and also just wanted to make the motion, I'm sorry, to recommend adopting the resolution and waiving the first reading and introduce the ordinance was what we're asking for. Thank you.
Any public comment?
There is no, did you want to open the public hearing?
No, I was just gonna ask your public comment. Any public comment?
There is no public comment.
Go ahead and close the public hearing. Guys, do you have anything to say?
Yes, I have a question. David, go ahead.
We may have the same question. Buildings that were built under the previous code are going to seek a remodel, let's say, and so now they come in and there's a whole new code. How much damage have we done to the remodeling industry by changing code? In other words, I have a building, it does not have sprinklers. New code requires sprinklers. Do I have to re-sprinkle my whole parcel, my whole property? It's previously acceptable under the building code, but now we've switched codes, so it's a problem. How do we resolve something like that?
Mike?
Ah, I double pushed it. I apologize. I would say the ordinance that we're putting before you right now recognizes the robustness of those existing buildings, so we can use them up into the square footages of their existing uses. So for instance, we say, hey, this building is so many, let's say it's 5,000 square feet, and we would propose a certain type of use. We say, well, under the existing building code there, you would not need sprinklers, therefore that use would be conforming now. So the way the code was previously, if there's a 3,600 square foot cutoff, if you were over 3,600 square feet, it was change of use, fire sprinklers, bells, alarms, whistles, it could trigger a lot of things. Now we're saying, no, now we can use these buildings in a more reasonable way for more uses. It's it's not off the charts, it's within the boundaries of its original construction and really recognizing those robust features without having to do expensive retrofit upgrades until you cross those original lines where you would need to have a sprinkler system.
Right. So it's always, I think, necessary to have some sort of an economic test in these cases, right? Otherwise, we could push ourselves into extreme situations for in the name of safety, but doing ourselves huge economic damage in the process. So we have to be really aware of that. So I'm always, I would say, a little cautious about applying new rules, you know, in a situation where we've got a lot of existing buildings out there that we're hoping to find reuse for and better use for, and we really hope that the code we're adopting doesn't inhibit that from happening here, whereas it could happen elsewhere.
That was that was our goal, was to take off the restrictions that were unreasonable and find a pathway to allow these existing buildings to grow, be reimagined, and without having to do expensive retrofits and upgrades.
Yeah, and I will agree with Jeremiah's happy accident of putting this on the regular agenda because it really does give an ability to highlight some of the work that was done this year, where I think in previous years, there's been a lot of kind of questions around kind of the additional code requirements and some of these things that get put in place. When I think you look at this code was really gone through this year and kind of actually, it's the new code, but there were changes and adjustments made to walk back some of those different conversations from previous years. So this was really a good partnership between Metro Fire and the city, making sure we're being as, you know, as safe as possible as we can, but also making sure those economic conditions exist for existing buildings and other things in order to move move projects forward. So this is a little bit of a different code year than we have had in the past in this conversation. So I think that's something to actually celebrate, is the happy accident of having to talk about this and not be on the consent calendar. So I really do appreciate the work that's been done, but I think that's a little bit different this year. What makes this a little different is that there were adjustments made to existing code to make it easier for some of our existing buildings to be compliant. And I always look at the Metro Fire team and building team, and they're nodding when I when I say these things to make sure I'm right, so.
I saw a fascinating article today talking about Culver City, California, and how, you know, they're more desperate down there than we are. It's so hard to get stuff built in LA County. A lot of builders just stopped doing business there. So they're talking about old stuff, and those are really great points, and I'm thinking about new stuff. We have dirt parcels that are too small to be profitable to build on. So Culver City is has amended its ordinances and building code, and they got state approval to do it, which was surprising, to only require one stairwell for apartments of certain sizes. And that sounds scary, and to David's point, you know, what's the fine line between safety and economics and housing? And I was shocked to read that there's really no evidence anywhere, and it's the standard in the rest of the world, having single stairwells on a lot of apartment buildings. There's no evidence that it's anyone's ever died from it. You know, no one died in a fire because there was only one stairwell. And when you amend your ordinances, do that, you can strengthen your other fire suppression, fire safety things to account for that. And I just thought, what a great opportunity. So I was wondering if you guys had heard about that. It's part of, you know, the the Yenbees would call it low-hanging fruit, so they say, and I was just wondering if you had heard anything about that.
Diana Schmidt, Deputy Fire Marshal, Metro Fire. There is a big discussion within the firefighting realm about the single stair, and there's a lot of work groups that are discussing in terms of what are the limitations to where firefighters can still also provide rescue, because the single stair is not only for rescue purposes or egress purposes, it's also for firefighters to be able to make it to that floor to then actually, you know, fight the fire and, you know, negotiate a rescue if need be. So those conversations are being had. We do recognize that it is a huge discussion. We're talking about these limited parcels and their sizes, and how do we make sure that we both make sure our community is safe and but then also a safe community is also one that is economically viable and is also healthy in terms of being able to, you know, bring businesses into these vacant parcels. So the discussion is being had. We are exercising all of those those discussions to entertain them, to make sure that we're not sacrificing for economic purposes firefighter safety or the safety of our residences, but it is something that we're entertaining.
Thank you.
So do I have a motion?
So so my question would be, when we transitioned from the three regional building codes to the UBC and then to now what's being called apparently the International Building Code, one of the things that it seemed like you might have just mentioned at the beginning is that it dropped the emphasis on wind loading and earthquakes in the different regions in favor of fire sprinklers. So the question is, did any of these changes go back and pick up the importance of regional climates and their effect on local buildings?
Yes, especially wind design and seismic loading, absolutely. ASE for engineering, they've gone through and revamped a lot of what they do. So the events that happened in Loma Prieta, things like that are not forgotten, obviously. So the governing of which force is worse, the the wind or the earthquake, it's still there, it's still robust. Some of some of the pathways to get there, new tools, as with anything cutting edge, we keep progressing, and some of the some of the math that gets us there has changed here or there in the ASE standards, but doing really well right now. And specifically for our region, yeah, it's gotten more lot-specific. Now you can go USGS and go right on the computer and go, what is the seismic zone for my lot, which might be different from your neighbor's lot, which is quite interesting. So it used to be done more by region. It's like, hey, all this region's number four, and you're like, I don't feel like it's a four, it's a three. Why do I have to spend money? Now it's like, oh, my lot is a 3.1, thank you very much. So more pinpointed in some areas. And then one criteria, of course, because both seismic and wind are huge concerns for engineering, especially large buildings, so it's gotten really complicated more and more scientific and more surgical, which can be appreciated.
Well, we have more information now, too.
Yeah, definitely.
You know, so, yeah. But all of this is really is why David's question is so important. You know, when we when you consider that our general plan may end up contemplating reuse and repurposing of some structures that existed around here since the 1980s, so it really makes a difference.
Definitely.
Okay. So if we're through, I'll move approval of the resolution.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Little.
Yeah.
Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Mayor Pulapati is absent. Vice Mayor Gatewood.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. Thank you, guys. All right. As they're walking and changing, let's go ahead and discuss subject. Next one is for the Rancho Cordova Youth Center update. Stacy, I already did your job. I'm gonna go ahead and call on Megan Siren of City Staffer, staff report.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and Council. Megan Siren with the City Manager's Office. We have here tonight to present you the three-year update of the Rancho Cordova Youth Center. Rancho Cordova Youth Center is a collaborative partnership between the city, Rancho Cordova PAL, and the Boys and Girls Club of Greater Sacramento. And tonight, we have a few members of our partnership team here with us. From Boys and Girls Club, we have John Ringo with who is the Chief Operating Officer. With PAL, we have Katie Swanson and Brett Whitall, who are PAL Youth Service Officers. And with the city, we have Ian Windrock and Stacy Delaney. So we will start with a short video created by Hayden Gregory, who was a summer communications My name's Adriana. Currently, I'm the Branch Manager with Boys and Girls Club of Greater Sacramento here at the Rancho Cordova Youth Center. We really focus on academic success, character development, and a healthy lifestyle in various different programs that we run daily.
My name is Katie Swanson. I'm with Rancho Cordova Police Activities League, also known as PAL. I've always enjoyed working with kids, so this was a way for me to give back to my community and to be able to interact with kids every day within my job was really exciting for me.
All of our ceramics classes, our dance, our soccer programs, they're all free to our families for students ages 6 to 17. We also provide peace of mind for our Rancho Cordova families, providing a space where students are safe, they're engaged, and they're participating in their community.
It's been great to see because these programs here with PAL and RCYC have given them the opportunity to have things presented to them that they might not have just from at home. PAL Marshal Arch is a great partnership with Masterly, who comes and puts on these six-week courses with the kids. They're learning and interacting with their friends, gaining skills with respect, but it's also a way for us to interact with them in a positive way. Some kids, they've never even played kickball, so for us to show them that, that's been really fun to see, and it's fun for us to get to hang out and play with them.
One of the biggest hurdles we have has been being able to get students here, and with the addition of seven school sites and getting transportation from school sites to Rancho Cordova Youth Center, we have seen an increase in the attendance and students building relationships with each other because they're seeing their friends at school, seeing their friends on the bus, and then at the center, and it just really helps them to grow and see their part in the community all the way around from the beginning of their day to the end of the day.
RCYC is...
their friends on the bus and then at the center. And it just really helps them to grow and see their part in the community all the way around from the beginning of their day to the end of the day.
R C Y C is a free program for all youth ages six to 17. That includes PAL martial arts, all specialty programming, summer program and STEM classes, all the different programs that they offer here, homework help. Everything is free for the family and for the youth involved. Lunches are provided, snacks are provided at no cost to the families. It really is a great area to have your children here after school. If you're looking for an outlet for them to make new friends, have help with their schoolwork and learn some new skills at no cost to you, it's just a great place for your kids to be.
All right. Do we have any public comment? Oh, are you still talking? All right, keep going. What? It was enough. That was awesome. I don't know what more we had to say.
Perfect. Evening. My name's Ian Winbrot. I'm an analyst in the City Manager's Office and I'm here to build on the video, but there's no way I can compete with the kids. Tonight, I'm going to share a little bit about how the R C Y C serves our community, our partners in impact, and where we're headed in the next two years. A little bit about our demographics. Over the last 12 months, we've served a greater number of youth in the times that they've attended R C Y C. We've served about 350 youth during regular hours. We've served a little less than 300 households and we've been open more than half of the year. We've seen consistent year-over-year growth with 20% greater attendance from the last year we came to council. We still have a strong focus on underserved youth and we have a robust teen and preteen population, which is rather unique for the youth center relative to other youth centers that are managed by the Boys and Girls Clubs of Greater Sacramento. And we still see seasonal fluctuations with respect to school year versus our summer, with summer populations being greater than our regular school year. A little bit about our schools. Our top school is Revue STEM Academy with almost twice as much as the second highest school that we serve, Rancho Cordova Elementary. And our top district is still Folsom Cordova Unified. Moving on to our partners in impact, wanted to start out with our summer provider, which is Echelon Catapult. This is a partnership with the Rancho Cordova Youth Center, which really brings in youth for near-peer mentorship. These are students from St. Francis and Jesuit, teaching a variety of STEM programming, which is exceptionally popular. This year, we launched our first AI for youth program at the Rancho Cordova Youth Center. In addition to that, we have cybersecurity with a programming language called Grok, robotics and engineering, as well as forensics for any of folks a fan of Bones or C S I. And beyond that, too, we also have programming languages like Python, taught by youth to youth. But we also have STEM programming during the school year. Intellabricks, which is a robotics and STEM provider regionally, is coming in for the first year this year. And beyond the science and applied technologies like robotics, we also have Sierra Nevada Journeys, which brings in a more field biology and chemistry focus as well. But it's not just STEM. We also have both visual and performing arts. Visual arts this year from Sojourner Truth African Heritage Museum, as well as a Roseville Provider that we've used in the past years as well. And Studio T providing performing arts through dance. A little bit about where we're headed. The number there of 35% is actually 50%. So in a partnership with F C U S D, we have a transportation program, which is causing both higher average daily attendance as well as higher persistence rates. So young folks, especially from our elementary schools, are coming to the center more regularly because they have access to transportation and they also see their friends and their neighbors jumping on the bus after school. We have improved communications in partnership with our Communications and Public Affairs Department, with campaigns for targeted demographics that we know are high priority for the youth center. And that photo there is a image of the front cover of our first catalog of R C Y C programs that's for fall and winter of '25, and we'll be producing another one for winter, spring of '26. With that, just wanted to say thank you again, and we're open for questions. And we also have our partners from both the Boys and Girls Clubs of Greater Sacramento and R C PAL.
I have a question. So now that you're printing a catalog, how is that being distributed?
Yeah, great question. So we've tried a number of different ways to be able to get this information into the hands of our community members. Of course, it's available digitally, but this year, we distributed it via a contractor to about 3,000 households that were around different schools that were high priority for us. We're also distributing them to providers in our community that work with high priority families, nonprofit organizations, as well as individual school sites that we have targeted because of the bus program. So we have folks like community schools coordinators, school nurses, school counselors, all providing this information to parents and families because we know that while staff may be trusted for members of our community, having those folks at school sites that young folks interact with every day have started to generate a lot more responses and referrals from community members as they hear about the youth center more and more.
I just wondered because, you know, the Park District sends out their catalog twice a year. And obviously, that's an expensive thing to do. But I just wondered how it's being distributed.
Any public comment?
There is no public comment for this item.
All right. Thank you very much. Oh, David wants to say something. David?
How are we doing with our daily average attendance during the school year in particular versus our capacity?
So we're about half of our capacity right now during the school year. So that's a pretty drastic growth, even from last year. And during the summer months, we're pretty close to capacity or at capacity. So we think that we're going to be able to close that gap or get very close to it between now and May and June.
Those summer programs, I know, filled up super quick.
Yep.
Like the Echelon Catapult ones with a lot of excess demand. It's really a question of is it, is it possible to offer any more of that, maybe even during the rest of the school year?
Yeah.
Weekends or something. That organization has a history of doing those sorts of things, so.
So Megan, Stacy and I had a conversation with Echelon Catapult for exactly that reason.
Okay.
So more to come. And the youth are the ones working within their organization to determine what their capacity is, as well as the configuration, if it's going to be over the weekend or during February and spring break, which we think might be a time where a lot of parents need support and are looking for programs like the ones that we offer at the youth center.
Is there an income qualification for after-school programs?
There is not.
Do other sites with Boys and Girls Club have income qualifications to limit participation?
John May asked that you come up. He says no.
He shook his head.
Ah, interesting. And finally, is there a way we can measure the efficiency or the quality of what we're offering versus some peers? Are there some measurements or evaluations or something we can use to say, oh, we're doing a great job or, oh, we've got a little more to work to do here?
Are you talking about the regular programming that we offer in partnership with R C PAL and the Boys and Girls Clubs?
Yeah, any, any parts of it. Because it's always easier when you're sitting up here to sort of look at objective evaluation kind of criteria versus, oh, look what we did. You know what I mean? It's hard to compare, oh, look what we did to anything else.
Yeah, so we're looking at evaluation in a number of ways. So qualitatively, we can get data directly from either guardians or parents through an annual survey. So from their perspective, how we're doing. And we've also talked about getting qualitative feedback from the youth themselves that are using the programs. And then we have some funding through a Department of Justice grant to be able to do quantitative evaluation from an independent third party. So we'll come back to council at a later time and talk about what evaluation criteria that we're looking at, as well as some more data that we've gotten from both survey instruments for youth and for parents.
There could be a partnership with the school district that could demonstrate the academic efficacy of after-school programming, for example. That'd be an interesting study for someone to do.
So David, if we just kind of expand on that, I think that's what your last sentence was, to find out if kids, because if you look at the breadth of what they're, what they're offering the kids, to find out if their academic achievement level is going up, you know, especially for, for STEM and, and in other, even in other subjects like arts or whatever.
Because we've had, we've had data like that for high school programs that we have supported in the past. You know, GPA is going up versus the overall student population, that kind of thing. So I thought that there might be a potential here as well. And that might lend itself to also getting more grants if you have data that says, look, what a great job we're doing. Just some thoughts.
Great. Thank you for the direction.
All right. So a couple of things on the side is communication-wise, to get the messaging out a little better. Chamber of Commerce, huge database of all, like a lot of small businesses, which happen to all live in Rancho. Also the Court of a Community Council, great way to get the message out so we can hit more people about some of the stuff that we're trying to get out. And you can do it on the digital, which means you don't have to, it doesn't have to cost much. So any way we can get more messaging, because I think, one, huge, great numbers, good job, and always willing to see how we can grow more of that.
Thank you.
Micah, did you have something to say? All right.
And I would just say, more Sac City Unified students. I know we have efforts ongoing to do that, but the most we could do, it seems a lot of the materials seem very specific to Folsom Cordova. And I get that's the majority of public school students in the city, but kind of a different story in my neighborhood. So it would be cool, however we can, to see more participation from students in our three Sac City schools.
Well, let's ask the question. Your, your bus transportation is Folsom Cordova. So are we researching an opportunity to get kids from Sac City Unified?
At this point, we haven't addressed Sac City Unified for transportation partnership, but they would have to be willing to come to the table. And they don't offer, I don't think, bus transportation, so.
They do have the ride-free program and it takes you to school and whatever.
With SACRT.
With SACRT, yeah. It's a partnership. So I wonder if they can add one more stop. Youth Center, I don't know. Obviously, more complicated than it seems, and I trust you guys, but Linda made a great point.
No, yeah. Folsom Cordova was, you know, a good partnership, but took a while to get started as well, so.
Well, we did, we did put visit sector, visit Rancho Cordova together with regional transit. So we could do the same thing for, for PAL or the Youth Center.
What was the presentation for E G students? I don't think they're coming over. No, it's a five-minute.
Yeah, the kids coming from Sunrise and RJM would need the ride-free.
They'd also have to do the.
It's like 6.9% of our youth are from Elk Grove Unified.
Okay. All right.
I think mainly in the summer.
Yeah, that makes sense. I like the programs we're starting to offer with the technology backgrounds, so we get more Jesuit kids there.
I just, I just realized there's one more bit of context. Schools also offer their own after-school programs in many cases. So a good measure might be, how are we in Rancho Cordova doing with after-school opportunities versus other communities? Like, is there a large unmet need there that we're somehow not quite meeting? Or are we doing a pretty good job? I don't have any idea, sitting here.
Well, actually, Folsom Cordova has a very aggressive.
Yes.
After-school program.
I suspect we're on the good side, but we may have more socioeconomic need than other communities. So that'd be an interesting question, though.
Yeah.
That might help direct what we're actually targeting with the youth, with the Youth Center.
They offer it in all of the Rancho Elementary schools. I can't remember what the actual name of it is, but.
ACES.
ACES, that's it.
Yeah.
And, and I do believe they do fill up at times, and so this is a little bit of a relief valve for some of those programs that aren't being met on campus.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
All right. As they're shifting, next up, let's get economic development up here. Stacy, go ahead and announce the subject.
A resolution approving the modifications and continuation of existing economic development incentives and introduction of a new retail incentive program.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, Council. I'm Laura Fickel, Economic Development Manager. With me tonight is Amanda Norton. She's here for moral, moral support and historical reference. So, did you want to say hi? Sorry.
Good evening, members of the council. Amanda Norton, nice to be here. Thank you.
All right. So tonight, we're here to introduce to you some modifications to current incentive programs and also introduce our new retail incentive program. We're going to go over the changes first, then talk about the retail incentive and why we're doing it, and then look to you for questions and feedback and next steps. So due to evolving business needs, market conditions and industry trends, we're proposing some modifications to the current programs. So we'll go through one by one. Sign of Facade Improvement was established in 2017 with two available programs underneath it. So there is a mini grant for $5,000 and then a two-thirds to one-third matching grant with a limit, project limit of $25,000. So our, our match was limited to $16,500. Our proposals, our changes that we're proposing is to make a simple upgrade to $10,000 for a mini grant, no match, and then also increase the maximum matching amount from $16,500 to $25,000. So just to give you some context, if someone came in with a $30,000, a project cost total of $30,000, we would cover up to $20,000 of that cost. For the jobs and talent attraction program, we updated that program last year in 2024, but we're back with this one. And just to remind you guys, this is $10,000 per highway job over $100,000 allocated over the course of five years per job. And this is, this one, we're just reducing the minimum new jobs required from 20 down to five. And this is so we can capture those early-stage companies that are looking for somewhere to set down roots and grow. For the business incentive program, we're updating the target industry sectors to be more aligned with our strategic plan and our AI ecosystem and the exciting things we have going on. You guys heard earlier about the health and life safety barriers for some businesses, so we actually are including that in our use, eligible use of funds that wasn't there before. One of the major improvements we're doing, we've always supported startups in these, but we're putting a little more definition around what that is for these programs. So this, they play a key role in innovation and job creation, but they also come with some risk and uncertainty. So we're limiting the grants to 10% of total startup costs to ensure that they're investing their own capital and have some solid foundation. And then we're defining it as startups as three years or less in, in operation, or they're still developing products and reaching, to reach profitability. We're also requiring proof of debt or equity commitments to confirm that the city's funds are a catalyst, not a crutch. That's really important to us. The other major update we're doing is removing the retail industry's unrelated language. They've been couched underneath the business improvement program, and so we're taking them out to do a standalone program now. So as I said, they've always been there.
Sorry. What is there? It's always the top two things, you know?
I, yes, I know. Yeah, we thought you'd appreciate that.
Did we really have to do that? You're talking Linda. We'll never have it. I mean, yay, bowling alley and movie theater. Oh, yeah.
See, I've had a conversation as recently as yesterday on the topic of movie theaters and bowling alleys. It's constant, persistent. I don't know of any bowling alleys opening anywhere right now or recently. I know of many going out of business.
As a matter of fact.
As a matter of fact? What, you're about the same ones going out of business?
No, I was going to say, there's actually more, it's evolving into a more hybrid model of experiential retail. You know, like Apex, right? That's bowling and arcade. So it's.
Punch Bowl Social just went out of business.
Did you have to?
They had, they had a bowling lane or two.
Listen, but that was a bit, that was way too much stuff. We need small.
They got to come to where the families are.
Yeah, like, we can't drive to downtown Sac.
There's like one bowling alley left in the county.
And it's in Folsom.
No, country club.
Two. Thank you, James.
And those are also laser tag, there's, and there's, there's a lot of other things to do there than just bowling, so.
Can I, can I ask a question while you're doing this? Is there something that you're not telling us, but you need to wink and nod? That's why we're doing this amazing thing? That's why we're doing this amazing thing?
I just need your approval, that's all.
I just need the eyebrows to go up a little bit higher and then you straighten out your neck. Because I just want to know what's the emphasis to pull it out of?
It's for marketability, to be honest. We need something separate and tangible that we can brand and take with us to the International Council of Shopping Centers.
That's all you have to say?
That's it.
Cool, done. That makes total sense to me.
That was my notes.
That was it? Moving on.
Move approval.
Second, why are we still talking? Go get us a bowling alley.
I also want to just highlight that we added commercial childcare centers to this.
Heck, yeah.
They go in commercial properties, and it's an amenity for a community just like anything else.
You know that the number-one people that pay for that in the region is actually based in Rancho Cordova? And there's 2,000 or 2,500 kids that still need daycare even in our city alone? It's crazy, the amount of money. If we could just get a couple of people to really open up the indoor... I mean, we're trying right now with a couple of people to do the at-home ones, but it's such a big need in Rancho if we really want our community to get back to work. But there's not... Daycare is so expensive, and they're just... I mean, it's $2,000 for a child. One of these little, I mean, wonderful children.
You know, a lot of the conversations I have for decades now with residents, particularly about full-service restaurant, I think is how we phrased it here.
Yeah.
You know, restaurant with tablecloth or nicer restaurant. I always hear the phrase, oh, I've got to drive to Folsom for that, or I've got to go to Eldorado Hills for that, or I've got to go fill in the blank for that. And it's always struck me as an irony that as long as we in Rancho Cordova are leaving the community to spend our dollars elsewhere and make businesses successful elsewhere, we are less likely to have them here.
Absolutely.
So the more you can support local restaurants, whether there's a tablecloth or not, the better our local environment and market, because other businesses will see restaurants being successful here and restaurants improving here. But it's like we're missing part of the message to our residents where they feel like they've got to leave, and they don't understand that leaving is the problem.
You're right. We've got 16 in Capital Village, and half of them are not open at dinner.
Well, just remember, the highest-paid restaurant, Wiener Schnitzel, is based in Rancho Cordova. Only the finest hot dogs, chili dogs. They have a fish dog now and a chicken dog with extra bacon on it. It is delicious. Listen, Joe likes the chili cheese fries. Let's not stop that.
You talk about the one on Bradshaw, isn't that... Is that still there?
Yeah, stop it. It's the highest grossing Wiener Schnitzel in the region.
I thought that became the sandwich shop.
No, it's now.
Oh, okay.
The Coloma one, not the Bradshaw one.
I don't make my way out there for my hot dogs.
Only the finest hot dogs in the region are basic.
Coloma and vehicle.
Listen, that and Brookfields. Delicious. All right. What else you got? That's it? All right. Do you need a motion? Let's see. Is there any public comment?
There is no public comment for this item.
Guys, anything else you'd like to know about this?
I just... I was trying to think yesterday. The emphasis on here is entertainment and food, and we definitely need those. But there's... Most clothes shopping is done online now. Where do you go to buy clothes in Rancho Cordova?
You never have. Not since McDonald's closed.
Marshalls. You go to Marshalls, you get your underwear at Target. Listen, stop it. Listen, I go there. You also can get really interesting wax candies, which are very delicious, but you shouldn't eat too many of them. And...
Target?
Target, Marshalls, Walmart.
Ross.
Ross.
I guess. I don't know.
No, those are all great ones. And we also have, not Victoria's, we have the place you put the lotions on, Skins? Bed Bath &amp; Beyond?
That's not clothes.
But that's next, too. That's all in the same line. Listen, move to Rancho.
We all know people who've said, I can't buy a suit that fits me in Rancho Cordova. And I think David is one of them.
Can you please get us a suit shop before I leave council? Just so I can live...
Made to measure.
Yeah.
Just tailor from scratch. I need one of those.
Yes, please. Dan Skogland, rest his peace.
We did leave in the guidelines a provision for any business that meets the guidelines that's not listed in the next categories that can prove an economic community benefit.
Because we don't have a suit shop, and that would be amazing.
It provides diverse...
Anyone that wants to start that, we have $25,000 for you and a lot of open areas.
Some guy at court the other day complimented my boss's suit, not mine. And I was like, what do you think about mine? You must not like it very much. So it was time to get a new one. That would be great.
You just heard it. Two people right now that open business for you. Diane, make some calls. Make something happen. Come on. No, just here. I need a suit shop.
That's where I go for my alterations. They're a great shop.
Yes. Shop. All right. Anything... Okay, I'm going to close. Oh, ask for a motion.
So moved.
Is it actually... Oh, yeah, adopt the resolution. Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Sander.
All right.
Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Councilmember Little.
Yeah.
Mayor Pulapotti is absent. Vice Mayor Gatewood.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. Stacy, would you like to announce the subject and do the staff report at the same time?
Yes. A resolution adopting the 2026 Rancho Cordova City Council meeting schedule. So as part of our annual business planning session, which is happening right now, we have proposed a 2026 city council meeting schedule for you, which is generally in alignment with our regular meeting schedule, where we have our regular meetings on the first and third Mondays, except when it falls on a holiday, and then it's the following Tuesday.